Okay. Welcome to the Board of Education meeting. This is August 9th, Wednesday, 6 o'clock. Are we in compliance of open meeting law notification?
Yes, we are.
Could you call the roll call, please?
Karen, Selagi.
Here.
Here.
Wyman.
Here.
Carolyn.
Here.
Here.
Thank you. Would you all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Dr. Davis, the land acknowledgement.
Yes, as we gather today, we'd like to acknowledge that in Oshkosh, we are on the ancestral homelands of the Ho'chunk Nation and the Menominee Indian Tribe of Wisconsin, who lived along the western shores of Lake Winnebago, Wisconsin's largest freshwater lake entirely within its borders. We acknowledge these indigenous sovereign communities who have stewarded the land throughout the generations and pay respect to their elders, past and present. We welcome the duty and opportunity to share stewardship of these lands.
Thank you very much. And next is the approval of the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Wright, Herzog.
Sorry, yes.
Thank you.
Call the roll, please.
Selagi.
Aye.
Aye.
Wyman.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Dewitt.
Aye.
Herzog.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, Board and Administrative Reports. First off is the Board President's report. And we have two very special people tonight for recognition for retirements. The first one is Tina Loehoff, who is a Secretary in Central Administration Office, and she's been with the district since 2006. And the next is Robert Summers, technology guru, infrastructure and services manager, and his location was at Central, and he has been with the district since 2017. Does anyone have any comments about these two retirees? Go ahead.
Thank you. I would like to wish people a long, healthy, and happy retirement. It's always sad to lose people, but on the other hand, life must go on in the district, and their lives will be forever changed by their experiences here in the district, and then they can take those into retirement and enjoy that. And of course, we always have opportunities for substituting, so we'd extend that opportunity to these retirees as well. Thank you.
And I would like to say thank you to both of them. Tina, for many of you, is a smiling face when you came into Central for so very, very many years. She was a parent that my kids knew, has three sons, and we kind of went through the ranks together, so it was really nice when she became a staff member at Central. And Bob Summers, I don't think we could have done a lot of the technology upgrades that we did as a district without him. We've been through board meetings, we've been through special board meetings where he'd be there getting wires here, there, and everything, so a very special thank you to him for everything he did to make us as tech-friendly and knowledgeable as we are. Happy retirement. Next, Wisconsin Association of School Boards update by Dr. Herzog.
Thank you very much. I attended the WASB Leadership Institute in Green Bay a couple of weeks ago, and I did not bring you everything from the two-day workshop, but I did bring you two that I thought were especially relevant. There were materials that I'm sharing with you tonight on governance and how what we do in the boardroom impacts what goes on in the classroom, and how to make sure that we're engaging and communicating with all parties for effectiveness. And then the second two pieces deal with safety and communication during times of crisis, which would tie in with one of the staff reports we have tonight on our district's safety plan. So those are for you, for your reading pleasure. I want to also note that Region 7, of which we are a part, will have its annual meeting on October 26th. More information will be forthcoming. And finally, the State Education Convention will be held in January from the 17th through the 19th in Milwaukee. And I know that Sherri will have the opportunity to reserve rooms for any of us who are thinking of attending, starting on August 16th. We don't have to decide if we're going, but I know that that's when the room blocks open, and so she'll be taking a look at that. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Superintendent's Report.
Yes, so tonight for the Superintendent Good News Report, again, continuing our summer school spotlight. Our summer school program seemed to fly by this year, but a lot of great learning took place. Oaklawn students enjoyed unique biking field trips as part of their Survivor class by Mr. Jeffers. First, they biked around the neighborhood, and then they biked out to County Park for some geocaching. So students were able to practice a variety of safety and survival techniques, including how to read a compass, which they used during their field trip. So some great learning going on. Young musicians at Oaklawn enjoyed an engaging intro to ukulele class led by Ms. Mindock. After learning about the ukuleles, students put on a concert for families and summer school students in July. A lot of hard work went into learning those chords, learning how to strum, and learning the words to sing. So lots of fun in that class. And speaking of fun, crafty kids at Jefferson Elementary collected animal facts and practiced drawing various animals with how-to-draw videos. For a culminating project, students made pop-up books with animal facts. They rocked this project with smiles all along the way. So great work to the students there. Our administrative team spent the last two days preparing for our back-to-school time coming up. Had some impactful professional development and collaboration with all of our administrators across the district. Our leaders are fiercely committed to making sure that our student-staff, schools, and districts succeed, and we're looking forward to a great year this year. Want to remind families that our school year starts Friday, September 1st. And a reminder for those, for students in the pre-K, K, and VELPHILPS, students refer to the specific first day back-to-school information for their schools. So really looking forward to getting everybody back in, and it was great to see all the principals and administrators over the last couple of days. Our Riverside Alternative Education Program was recently awarded a $5,000 grant from the Elizabeth J. Rasmussen School Program Fund with the Oshkosh Area Community Foundation. The funds will be used to support self-paced, individualized learning at Fox Valley Technical College campuses for students who have struggled to find success in the traditional school setting. We're grateful for the support and the ability to ensure all students have access to an engaging school environment that's best for them and supports their future. As a reminder, we're less than two weeks away from our first milestone moment for Menominee Elementary School. A groundbreaking ceremony will be held on Tuesday, August 22nd at 2:00 p.m. The event will feature representatives from the new school community, and will be attended by district and school leadership. We invite the entire community in the celebration, and you can find more information on our website. So we hope to see everybody out on that site. Also excited to celebrate the public dedication and open house for the brand-new VELPHILPS Middle School coming on Sunday, September 17th at 4:00 p.m. The event will feature a brief dedication survey, ceremony, and self-guided tours. We invite the entire community to come and join us in this momentous celebration. You can find more information on the website. Also excited to say that Michael Phillips, VEL's son, will be planning to be in attendance for that event to speak. So we're really excited to be able to share that opportunity with him. And finally, just my work around the really the last month, if you will, and work that we've done throughout the city. So again, really excited. A lot of preparation has gone into this school year. We'll be inviting teachers back in the next couple of weeks, and really excited to have our kids begin really soon. So that concludes the Superintendent's Good News Report for tonight.
Thank you. VELPHILPS Update.
Yes, we wanted an opportunity, as before we get into the physical structure, again, we're transitioning into some of the programming. Just a few things I wanted to highlight. Again, we've talked about a staggered start for VELPHILPS students, and that's essentially specialized because of the new building. And as we worked with the administration at VELPHILPS, wanted to provide eighth graders an opportunity to be able to get in the building, and they're developing an ambassador program for eighth-grade leadership opportunities for them to become familiar with the building. And then as we welcome in our seventh and sixth graders, then that next week, we'll have some leaders who have been familiar with the building. So we've got a staggered start, and the families that are affected with that have received that information, and we'll give those updates as we get a little bit closer. So some exciting leadership opportunities coming up there. I just mentioned the building dedication on September 17th, so excited about that. And also wanted to point out just a couple of things as we've transitioned fully. One is for VELPHILPS. The other one was thinking about Webster Middle School. So one is relocation of wood. So one of the special things that you'll see when we come to VELPHILPS on September 17th is the preservation of some cultural pieces from both the Webster Middle School site and the Merrill Middle School site. So wood floors have been something that we've been able to preserve, and so we've had, that preservation is up in multiple places in VELPHILPS Middle School. We have wood that was both, that was on the third floor of Merrill, and some wood floors that we're able to remove at this point, because we don't need those. And wood before the demo of Webster Middle School, we're able to take some wood from there, too. There's some beautiful places that we've been able to put that up to show off, and those are really touchpoint, cultural touchpoints, that we want to make sure that we're honoring the past as we're bringing in the future. So just wanted to be able to point those out, and we'll make sure that those are included on the tour. And then also a reminder, and we've talked about this in the past, but that the auditorium seats that were at Webster Middle School have been transitioned and used now for the Hooper Auditorium over at North. So we want to make sure that we're using all the resources that we can from the previous schools to make sure that they're put to good use throughout the district. So just a couple of reminders as we're making these transitions, and just excited to be able to celebrate with the community and what they have supported.
Fantastic. Okay. District Administrator Supplemental Reports. First one is referendum facilities, secure vestibule project updates. Mr. Fox, Mr. Konsady.
Thank you. Good evening. So just a quick note before we get started. The referendum projects, as in my report, are on budget. With regard to schedule, VELPHILPS, we finally hit substantial completion. That's important. We've been talking about that for some time. West and North High School are both on track in terms of schedule. We spoke last month about Oakwood being slightly delayed. Reed Elementary is slightly delayed as well, per my report. So I want to make sure I acknowledge that. I also want to take just a brief moment and explain, as we start to really get into the pictures of VELPHILPS, and we start to talk about secure vestibule projects, I think it's important that we understand maybe the difference in terms when we talk about substantial completion versus what is the actual completion. What are students going to see? You know, why is it when you drive by VELPHILPS right now, the parking lot isn't, and when you said it's going to be complete? So we wanted to be able to just take a quick moment and address what we mean when we say substantial completion versus what they will see on September 1st.
Yes, thank you, Jim. So really, the contractual definition of substantial completion is that the building can be occupied at that point. So it is, the building has passed life safety checks, all of those things, so that we can start to move furniture in, we can start to get staff into those pieces. The building itself is safe. One of the biggest, I think, transitions that occurs inside the building, and it's a little hard to see right now, is that once substantial completion is hit, those walking around with high-visibility gear, hard hats, safety glasses, since we've passed those safety checks, you'll start to see people walking around in just a green t-shirt or something like that. So we've passed a major safety aspect. Also associated to that, I mean, the project is substantially complete. Now, with that, there can be some blurred lines. I think it's fair to say that the building itself is 99.5% complete. There are some things that will trickle on into the rest of this month. However, I would say to Jim's comment, as far as what kids will expect when they come back, you know, parking lots will be done, sidewalks will be complete, all the landscaping will be installed. Will it look like fresh, new landscaping? Yes. Will there be potentially straw on the ground as we're trying to get grass to grow? Yes, those things will be there, right? But as far as accessibility to and from the building, that will, the kids will feel like this is a complete building. Myron is working hard to make sure that they will be complete over the next couple of weeks, and we have no fears that, you know, they will, there will be near the contractor traffic come August 31st that there is today.
Thank you for that. So we're completed in the last 30 days, Oakwood Elementary, Reed Elementary, fairly similar projects. Demolition, again, was completed at Oakwood, in a former reception area. Roofing has been completed in all areas. Reed Elementary, asbestos abatement was completed, demolition was completed. This was a very quick project. So West High School, demolition of the vestibule was completed, the attendant room in the secure vestibule was built. And North High School, very similar scope, demolition was completed, the attendant room in the secure vestibule had been built. So some pictures, on the far-left-hand side is North High School. This will be the western entrance. Remember, North High School, really, for entrance number one, has two separate entrances, an eastern and west entrance. We selected a secure vestibule to be in the westernmost entrance. So the room that you're seeing to your left is the new attendance room, so they will greet visitors coming into that new vestibule. And you can see the interior storefront, just to the right of that room. On the bottom is West High School. You can see in the back, that's going to be entrance 38, but in the back of that vestibule, you can see the attendance office, and then that's a full-glass vestibule where they will greet visitors and release them into the building. Center pictures are of Oakwood. That is the Oakwood facade before the brick started going on this past week or so. Asphalt is coming up later next week, and again, we'll see those completion pieces rapidly fill in. You can see on the bottom picture, that is the west side of Oakwood, the parking lot has been fully graded, concrete is in place, and they're just awaiting finished grade in asphalt, which is occurring next week. Excuse me, late this week is grade, next week is asphalt. On the far right is Reed. Reed has come a long way, so this picture's a little dated, having sent it out last week. But the top picture is a picture from inside the office area. I can say that today's casework is set, the walls are painted, the ceiling grid is in, so that's how rapidly things can change. The bottom is a picture of the entrance number one, and that is where the secure vestibule piece will take place with an interior storefront, very similar to what you're seeing at the interior of West and North. So projected work for the next 30 days, Oakwood and Reed Elementary, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, those are our MEP, all our roughens will be completed, which they are. Interior walls will be built and finished, I can tell you that they have been. Paint will be completed, which it is. Doors and frames are currently being installed. HVAC has been completed already, and will be tested next week. Ceilings are being buttoned up as we speak right now. So it's really rapidly progressing. West High School, installation of interior vestibule doors and hardware. So as you saw in the picture, the storefront, the actual framing is there, the glass is going in, the doors are going on. HVAC installation is complete, and startup is underway, paint finish is done at West. North High School, same installation of interior, exterior doors is complete. Along with the Capelli Project, OASD replaced both the exterior doors to give the whole front facade a facelift, so the eastern doors were replaced at the same time as the western doors. HVAC installation is complete, and it is up and running. Paint and finish work on interior surfaces. I can say that that is complete at North High School as well. So VELPHILPS Middle School, project completion. So this will be the last time that we speak about VELPHILPS, the overall construction project. Construction work has been inspected, corrections are ongoing. That is a normalized piece of the construction progress, progress for the construction project, as Nate had pointed out. I was in the building today, and the entire fire department was there, going through, you know, all the safety features and the fire alarm. So those tests are underway, all looking very good. Webster, Merrill, and Webster-Stanley Middle School items are in the process of being moved right now. Today was day one from Merrill. They're being moved into VELPHILPS, so that should be complete by Friday. Everything is being placed in classrooms to receive staff on Monday, the 14th. New furniture has been distributed that we purchased as part of the overall project. The bulk of that has been delivered. Friday will be the last day for new furniture delivery with the current vendor. We do have one more shipment coming on, oh, next week, late next week. I think we've got one shipment coming in, and then that will complete our new furniture at VELPHILPS. Educators and support staff, as I had mentioned, will be able to access VELPHILPS on August 14th. They'll be able to access all their classrooms with full custodial support, and they can start loading all their shelves and doing all the fun things that they need to do to prepare for contract wheat. And of course, Brian had mentioned, open house schedule for September 17th. Some quick photos, again, things are changing rapidly, particularly because landscaping is underway, so, but to give you a flavor for what is ongoing, top-left picture, again, is a picture of the eastern elevation with the library, main office. The center picture is the southeastern elevation, if you will. It kind of captures the band choir orchestra area adjacent to the fieldhouse. The picture top-right is from Nevada Street, and that is your academic tower, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. On your lower left is from the northwest, and again, that is your academic tower from the corner of Nevada and Jackson. And then on the bottom right is a picture from the southwest corner of Jackson Street, really looking at Section C, I guess that'd be now Oshkosh Area Schools, Section B, per our lock schedule, door schedules, and that's going to be your art wing. T and E is going to be shipping and receiving, so. I'm sorry, I'm wrong. That is, I apologize, my mind drifted. So that's actually a picture of our new sign on the west side. The sign has not been constructed yet, and that is the drop-off circle. My apologies for that.
I know that there's quite a few instances, if you drive by the building right now, that appears to have like an exterior finish missing. I just would note that all of that material is in the city of Oshkosh. They're just in the process of installing it over the next couple of weeks. So this will look like a completely buttoned-up building in no time. So some projects around the area, not necessarily Oshkosh-related, are waiting on exterior materials. We are fortunately not. We are just getting in the process of having them installed, so.
We are, and I happened to see today, it wasn't captured in pictures, but the actual VELPHILPS is on the building. The signage, the logo is on the building, on the south side of the building. They were working on the digital signboard today. So there's still a lot of things happening that are really changing the look of the exterior of that building, but it is all falling in line with the overall progress of the project, so.
That's great.
Any questions on what we've discussed today, or where we're at, or where we will be on September 1st?
I saw turf going down at West, too.
Yeah.
I know a bunch of people will be excited about that as well.
Yeah.
And since we care and talk about safety a lot, you know, we've done a lot of secure vestibules to make our schools, you know, substantially safer, so I just wanted to add that comment for our listening session tonight.
Yeah.
You know, I think it's something that we need to regularly speak about, you know, how, what the efforts that we're putting in place to make our schools as safe as we can, so.
Yeah, piggybacking on that, with these four projects complete, the Oakwood, Reed, North, and West, now every single one of our schools has a secure entry. Is that correct?
Right. To be clear, even prior to this project, every school had a secure entry.
Now it's, yes.
Right? So this is an enhancement to that process. We could add that Shapiro, working through Bob Summers and our IT team, as well as maintenance, I mean, we've been able to enhance the security of that facility as well. So it is not something that was a construction project necessarily, it's more of a technology-related and door-related project, but they will, they received an enhancement as well.
Yeah. And thank you for that clarification. By secure entry, I mean like a separate entry where you, it's a double entry, is really.
Correct.
So thank you for that point, that it's always been secure, but now there's really two entry points where people can't get into the building until they've been cleared.
Correct.
And I do have a question about the Oakwood parking lot. So that used to be a pavement play space, it had like some basketball hoops and foursquare.
Correct.
Now is it only going to be a parking lot?
That is correct.
Okay. That makes sense, because they lost the front one.
It will be a parking lot and a dedicated drop-off, much-needed modification to that play space. I know that there are some ongoing conversations about what could be some hardscape surfaces for kids for future play, you know, that conversation is still ongoing.
Right. Yeah. All right, thank you. Go.
I just have a quick question regarding the number-one question that I get about VELPHILPS, whether I'm at like a school board function or breakfast or something. They all want to know, what is up with that house? And is the school district planning to purchase that house eventually?
Well, I can tell you that prior to the project, this school made a lot of efforts to purchase that house, and the owners really wanted to remain there. So that was their choice, of course. So the building was designed around that piece of property. Ultimately, when the owner decides to sell, I'm sure that they will, there would likely be some communication between Oshkosh Schools and the owner at that point. Correct.
Thank you. Well, hats off to both of you. You've done an incredible amount of work, and we as a board are appreciative, and the community is appreciative, too. It's really going to be very, very exciting for the community to be able to walk into VELPHILPS and see the future of education in Oshkosh, really. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, guys. Mr. Nihans, Budget Variance, Esser Funds Update.
Good evening. So this budget variance report really has to do with the wrapping up, or where we are at this current time for the wrap-up of the prior fiscal year. There's not enough information for the current fiscal year, and the board hasn't actually approved and set a budget for the 2324 year yet. That happens in September. The 2223 budget year is going to end up over budget. We are going to have a deficit. That deficit is the health plan. As we reconciled out the health plan, you have some calculations that you have to do accounting-wise to make sure that we are accounting for any claim or potential claim that could have happened prior to June 30th in the fiscal year. So there's a couple of calculations that happen behind the scenes to come up with what our liability and our true expense should have been for the fiscal year. So we ended up $3.3 million over in the health plan. Again, our health plan runs from January, December, as a plan year, so we plan the health plan on a calendar year. The renewal for that and anything that we are going to do with the actual plan design happens along the calendar year, and, but we, accounting-wise, we reconcile based on our fiscal year, which is a completely different year. So we've got a couple of things going on with that. We don't have, this being our, we're a year and a half into the plan, we don't have a lot of data to help us with predictions on where we're going yet. So I would expect that in three more years, we'll have better data and more reliable data to be able to dial down what our plan design is, and premium should be based on the fiscal year as well. So right now, it's kind of based on the plan year instead of the fiscal year. We need more data to be able to start making a little bit of a shift for that. So with the $3.3 million, we have shifted $2.2 million from Fund 10 into Fund 46. What we did was really look at Fund 46 expenses that qualify for Fund 46, which would, for us, the large part of that is hardscapes, so parking lots. We also had some roofing projects and other repairs in the buildings that qualify for Fund 46. So we did shift $2.2 million to Fund 46. So we have about a million one that is still, right now, showing as a deficit. The business office is working through whether we are going to utilize a portion of the portion of the committed balance for the health plan, which we have 1.5 million for, in reserves for a situation like this. Or if what we're going to do is look at some ESER funds and offsetting the 1.1 million with some ESER funds in some different manners. So we're looking at how that's going to truly tie out. We'll have that in the next couple of weeks is what we're looking at. So a couple of things on the health plan, and I've been including in the monthly reports, the monthly health and quarterly dental update. For this calendar year, this plan year, January through June, we still are running hot. We're running about 107 loss ratio, which is a 1.1 million loss right now without anything being calculated in. So our true plan year right now is a 1.1 million loss. As we've created the plan, again, this is a young plan. We're a year and a half into it. If you look from inception until today, we still are running slightly over a $5 million surplus. So it's not that the health plan isn't working well and it's not functioning. We just have a disconnect right now between fiscal year and plan year and how we're going to get those two to kind of coalesce a little bit better than what we have currently. One additional thing that I just want to highlight, as we did our wage increases and negotiations with the different work groups, one of the things that was asked by the different work groups was coming back after the biennium got set and potentially being able to look at an additional stipend or additional compensation depending on where the biennium landed. Obviously, the biennium landed well for the district. We got some fairly large increases in revenue. But the way the health plan ended up, rather than being able to save $2 million and reduce our budget for the health by what we were anticipating was $2 million for next year, we're actually going to have to increase it from this year to next year by $2 million. So we've got a $4 million shift budgeting wise to be able to shift into the health plan. So at this time, I'm a little hesitant or reluctant to say we're going to have three or $4 million to do an additional stipend for staff with that. We are going to be presenting what our plan and outlook is for the health plan at the next Facility and Finance meeting, which happens next Thursday. So at that time, the committee will hear some ideas that the broker and I have on how we're going to move forward. One thing I do want to make clear though is we, it is not our intent to increase premiums because of this. We actually have some different things that we're looking at to reduce premiums. So again, that'll be done at the Thursday Facility and Finance Committee. We can have those conversations. But again, that is the advantage of a self insured plan from a fully insured where you can have a loss year and still potentially not have it come out and say we're going to increase premiums by 20% or that. Where we have a little bit of flexibility with what we're doing. Any questions?
Looking forward to Facilities and Finance to hear your ideas.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Drew.
Mrs. Conrad, Plan for Washington Elementary School, RFP process.
All right. So in our staff report, I outlined what the process is going to be for the sale of Washington Elementary School. And so with that, remember that Washington Elementary School and the sale of that property has been part of Phase One of our planning that was presented to the board, the FAC 1.0, so to speak, was in June of 2020. And it was, the charge of the FAC was to consolidate buildings, build the new middle school, which we know as now Vell Phillips, and a new elementary school. So the very last piece of Phase One is to sell the Washington School site once Menominee Elementary School opens. So the proposed RFP process that's in front of the board is to discuss this at a September 13th closed session. What does that process look like? We are proposing that we would do an announcement of sale September 25th or in the September timeframe with all the things that anybody that is looking to purchase a property would look for, size of parcel, condition, property value, availability date. And most importantly, and where we want feedback on is the board selling criteria. And so what will that be? The proposed plan, the timeline, what we are looking for from a possible developer or purchaser. We are looking to publish that RFP in November, have a preview walkthrough in November, and looking for bids at the end of November. Once again, this is a proposal pending further discussion with the board. In addition to that, the city and the Oshkosh Area School District met with the Neighborhoods Association on July 27th, Stevens Park, River East, and Menominee South to discuss what this proposal could look like and also get input, feedback, and answer any questions that the Neighborhoods had on the proposed sale of Washington School.
It was a wonderful neighborhood meeting. Julie came very prepared and answered a lot of questions, very good questions and concerns of the neighbors. And she talked about the RFP process, which makes it fair for everyone to submit their proposal. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Julie.
Committee reports. I don't have a list of any committee reports. We've been off for a few weeks, so I'm sure we will have some in our next few meetings. Thank you very much. Next up, non-agenda related public forum. We have one person signed up and that's Jean Erdman. When you come up, if you could please state your name clearly, give us her full address and the topic you wish to address. And please state clearly and precisely the matters of your concern and limit your comments to three minutes, please.
Sure. My name is Jean Erdman. I live at 415 South Metal Street in Oshkosh. I have two children in the schools and pretty soon I'll have two little ones in the schools, grandchild and great niece. When I think about how to improve schools, oh, I also wanted to say, Kelly, welcome to the board.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it, Jean.
How to improve schools? Okay. I already know the rest of you through time, so I'm not trying to neglect anybody. How to improve schools? The thing I think about is the people who are affected are most likely to give the right solution and those who work with the situation on a daily basis. And I appreciate the extent to which you talk to teachers and talk to staff and trust them. Okay. Then I sort of was thinking, what is school for? And I think you make it very clear that one of the things it's for is academic achievement and that's very important. But I really want to commend the district in terms of making schools safe. And the faithfulness and steadfastness in which you've found money and convinced the public to spend the money to do those double entry ways. It's very, very reassuring. And I don't know whether it's a good idea to publicize that or not in terms of safety, what makes it most safe if you talk about it or you don't talk about it. But I really commend you for what you've done. School is also for making friends. Your siblings can't dump you. There's, no matter how naughty you are to a sibling, you're still there, but your friends can. So learning to get along with people who are alike or different, that's a big deal. Preparation for work, finding your likes and dislikes, that's a big deal. Social skills, getting along across differences leads me into racial equity. And I like it that the district is starting to really think from the child to the school district. What happened to this child? Was this good? Was this acceptable? Was this not acceptable? You really are being very child, student focused in terms of what kinds of things would change that would be better for all of the girls and boys, all of the children, the white kids and the children of color as well. So that's good. And school is also for learning about the environment and protecting the environment. So the one thing I'd like to say for hiring, I'm probably going to mix, I'll be done in three minutes, but I'm going to mix my agenda, non-agenda into one thing. Okay? Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay. When you do hiring, UW Oshkosh, where I used to work, is laying off 200 people. And so I would suggest you contact them. Many of them are licensed teachers and your timing in need is unfortunately perfect. And there'll be people in LNS, there'll be people in business, there'll be people in the college van, and there'll be people in nursing. So that may help. The one thing I would say is anything you can do to communicate the goodness of our schools for the little ones, for the children, for the teens, for the eighth graders, you know, seventh graders, the sixth graders, for all of them. I don't know that we always hear that. I don't know if it'd be appropriate to have a little kid come up and talk about my favorite thing at school today was, but that would be really sweet to see. Okay. The last comment is please publicize more fully and dramatically and repeatedly the 4K programs. I have a neighbor who didn't know anything about them. And I have a great niece whose mom didn't know anything about them. And you probably think you're doing a lot, but you got to do something different or more because I hate to see these people miss this wonderful opportunity. The district is a really good place to go to school. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jean.
And Jean was also on our agenda related, so we're good? Wonderful. Thank you so much. We are at workshops. First workshop is the Safety Plan with Mrs. Conrad.
So, good evening. I'm Julie Conrad, Assistant Superintendent of Operations. And the KPI for our Safety Plan comes underneath my area. So first off, in our annual strategic plan, we have four core areas. And so tonight's KPI, Key Performance Indicator, that we're going to be talking about is self-safe and healthy schools. And that is our Safety Plan. And having a Safety Plan makes up 20% of that core area's star rating, which we are currently rated at four stars. So in that particular core area, our charge is to maintain safe schools and support the physical, mental, and social, emotional health of all students. So today, we are really going to be talking about the physical safety and the infrastructure and the pieces that we do to prevent and respond when in an emergency and also to address anything after action. So to do that, we have a comprehensive Safety Plan that you had actually in your board packet that we do not release to the public for, once again, safety concerns. And so you have that. The plan reflects the requirements for safety drills, the evaluation, the professional development and training that many of your staff, or many of our staff are going through like right now. The collaboration that we have with local law enforcement and emergency management agencies. We review the plan annually and the plan is reviewed annually by you, the school board. In the past, we have been doing that in the month of December. And as we shifted into our key performance indicators, shifting the plan to August, right before school started, seemed like it made a lot of sense. And so you have the updated plan for the 2324 school year in there. And with that, we are in compliance with Wisconsin State Statute 118.07. So why does this matter? We, every single day, we receive a family's most precious treasure every day in our schools. And that is their child, that is their children. And it is our number one obligation to have safe environments and to have safe schools. So plans and training support students and staff to feel safe, to feel prepared, and to be ready to learn. When we don't have to worry about those safety pieces, we're more prepared to learn. And also, we're better equipped to respond in a crisis when we've been prepared. School Safety Plan gets all stakeholders to focus in on that school environment, and we'll talk more about that. And all of our safety plans are aligned to emergency manage frameworks, which is, everybody knows as FEMA. So once again, our rating is a four star. And I believe that after we look at the Safety Plan here and we go into next year, that we'll be rating ourselves at a five star because we've done some opportunities for improvement that I believe will move us to that next rating level. So for celebrations, we refer to our APCCOT team, which is our Emergency Preparedness Collaborative Operations Team. Always a mouthful and always acronyms, right? We have a longstanding partnership with our law enforcement and we are a model in the state of Wisconsin when it comes to emergency preparedness. We are active on state committees and we are often asked to be on boards or on committees to provide feedback. We have monthly APCCOT meetings with our local law enforcement so that we all stay in connection. And actually, our upcoming meetings are going to be very important because we have a lot of new faces, right, in the school district or in new roles. So the Wisconsin Office of School Safety recently completed our review just last month of our safety plans. And we were found to be thorough and meeting all requirements of Wisconsin State Statute of 118.07. And it was stated that we clearly show that safety is a priority in the Oshkosh Area School District. So that was a piece of feedback right off of that report. So opportunities for improvement. The drills and the safety plans and the training, we constantly have to be monitoring to ensure that we're actually doing that. You can't be prepared if you actually don't go through the training to be prepared. And so, and adapting in real time to current events or things that are going on in our local community, in the state, in our nation, in the world. We need to be constantly adapting based on threats and concerns. We did a review of the Visitor Management System, which is Raptor, which I'm going to talk about more thoroughly. And we did that review through an equity lens and we'll talk about that. Training for the newly reorganized executive team, and actually that happened, and I'll talk more about that. And then walkthroughs of the reunification site was an opportunity for improvement and that's also planned as well because, once again, being prepared. So we have had a visitor management system and having the secure vestibules or the secure entries is actually part of that visitor management system. But the most important part of a visitor management system is truly knowing who's in your building at any given time. That's really the purpose of a visitor management system. Back in 2020, we introduced Raptor as being our visitor management system, a way to collect like adult names, who the visitor was, distribute like a badge or sticky for the visitor to be able to have. And when we did that, they were required to have an ID or provide a name and a date of birth to be entered into that system. And when we did that, that was checking against one and one only thing, which was the sex offender list. And at many points in time, I think individuals, our staff, our community members were thinking that Raptor was doing a background check. And it wasn't. It wasn't doing a background check. It was really truly acting as our visitor management system, once again, knowing who were the adults in our building. Feedback from our families and community advocates revealed that using Raptor in the way that we were using our visitor management system was creating unnecessary barriers for engagement in our schools, for adults, for families to be able to come in and actually participate. So OAASD Policy 9150 on school visitors and Policy 7440, Facility Security, addresses the requirements for an individual that may be on the sex offender registry. So having the Raptor system and an ID check, we have a policy for that and we have individuals that are following that. So once again, the purpose of the visitor management system is really about knowing who is in our buildings. So our recommendation is that we sunset the use of Raptor. We are still going to have a visitor management system, but not using the actual, you push in your driver's license and print out a badge. So starting on September 1st, we're going to have an updated universal procedure for visitor check-in and checkout. It also matches up with the increase in our secure vestibule pieces. All visitors, they will buzz into the, buzz into the door like they currently do. We will welcome them, say, they will state the reason for their visit, et cetera. And so a visitor will come on in. They will check into a Chromebook kiosk station. And if you as board members have come in to visit central office where you like type in your name and you check in on that kiosk station, it's going to be very similar. They're going to submit their name, their reason for visit, and most importantly, where are they going in the building so that we know where they are at any given time. They're going to be issued a visitor tag. They're gonna be issued a visitor tag. And then we will be asking them to return on checkout because we'll ask them to come back, check out of the kiosk, and go on their way. Students will check in and check out. And that's more for like high school. And actually, we were already doing that procedure like at the doorway. So like students, when they would come in, if you were coming in from an appointment or late, they were checking in the kiosk station. The new procedures give us accurate information and location of visitors in the building. So at any given time, if something happens, we wanna know who was in the building, at what time, where did they check in? We have a log of that for every single building. And it's providing a listing of all the adults. This new procedure also remeets all of the requirements of Policy 9150 and Policy 7440. So another opportunity for improvement and what we've done so far and are going to do coming up is the executive team actually went through a tabletop on Monday in all of our new roles and with our new organization. And our APTCOT team walked the entire executive team through a tabletop exercise. And that was awesome training for us to really understand each other and how we would respond in a certain scenario. And also, how incident command and how our emergency plan actually works. All of our administrators yesterday went through emergency preparedness training. And we also did a tabletop exercise at that time. And we did tactical radio training. So knowing how do we communicate in an emergency response. On August 29th, this was also part of our opportunities. We will be walking through both our reunification sites with all of our school district administrators, knowing how would this work if we had to reunify after evacuation of a building? And then all of our OAASD staff, through their HR modules that they do when they're welcomed back. We have all kinds of training pieces. They're completing their Alice training. They will be conducting drills. And they also engage in a tabletop exercise at their school building. And we will be having comprehensive Alice training, not just the, taking the online modules, but the comprehensive Alice training for our new OAASD administrators as well. All of these things will help us get to our five-star rating.
What is a tabletop exercise?
Great question. So a tabletop exercise is where like somebody is designated as the person who's running the exercise. And what they do is they read a scenario, like a safety scenario. So let's say there is, I don't know, there was a bomb threat was called into one of the high schools. And they would start the scenario. And they would give us certain criteria, certain things that were happening. And then we would have to talk to, talk through, how do you respond? What would you do, number one? What would you do, number two? What would you do, number three? And then we get through the exercise. And then they go, oh, wait, new information just came in. And then we would have to respond to that. And they go, oh, wait, here's some more information. And then we would get through the exercise. And then we would go through a mock like after-action and debrief on what went well, where do we have questions? Where do we need to improve or shore up our training?
Thank you.
So for more information on safety and security in the Oshkosh area school district, you can go directly to our school district website under Safety and Security. And there is a short, I believe it was seven minutes when I rewatched it, seven-minute video on what is Alice? And what do we do in emergency response? You may be going, what is Alice? And that's the acronym we use for when we have, when there may be an intruder in the building or something is happening in the building. And students and staff then actually respond accordingly based on their training. And then also, there is information, and we encourage anybody, if you see something, say something. If you know something, we, like, information is key when it comes to keeping all of our schools and our children safe. We really encourage you to use Speak Up, Speak Out, also known as SUSO. We train that, we give that information to our students. We put that out to families. But if you speak up, speak out, see something, say something, that's how we keep everybody safe. That's our number-one piece of prevention.
Excuse me, I have a question on that.
Sure.
This summer, State Attorney General Joshua Call was in Oshkosh, and this topic had come up at that time. I don't believe the state budget had been signed then. And there was some question then as to whether or not funding would continue at the same level. Does anyone have an update on the funding of this moving forward?
I'm not sure about the funding level. But what I do know is that Speak Up and Speak Out and that resource and that tool is up and running for this school year. As far as the level of funding for that particular department, I don't know that amount.
Okay, thank you.
That completes my presentation.
I have a question. Regarding the Alice training, a few years ago, board members were invited to participate in an Alice drill where they fired, I don't know if it was live ammunition, but it smelled and sounded, yeah. And I found that to be one of the most valuable trainings to see what our students go through during these Alice trainings. And I would, are you planning to invite board members to attend any of those trainings?
We'll take that into consideration. But I also do wanna be clear that when we go through Alice drills with students in classrooms, in schools, like, we're not doing that level of a drill.
Right, this was unique.
That was unique with like, we were also training and working with law enforcement at that time. And so just to be clear, we're not doing that with.
We do not do that.
We're not doing that with students, right?
That would be terrible, no.
Yeah. But yes, that's a great opportunity because we really understand how we all work together. And when you have outside agencies coming in and collaborating with the school district, the more that you know each other, have that relationship, and understand how each other responds, the better we're gonna be able to respond in a situation.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just a comment. Do you know someone in the community that's questioning like the safety of our schools and the work that's went into it? Like, just please refer them to the information that was just presented so that they can be more comfortable with what, you know, what's all in place, so.
I encourage, reach out to me anytime. And I'm happy to talk with anybody about our safety and emergency preparedness here in the Oshkosh area school district.
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you very much, that was very informative. And next, we have Dr. Coleman, 2223, Out-of-School Suspension Report.
All right, well, good evening to honorable board members, our community members, and those listening. I'll continue the conversation that Julie Conrad began just around our vision and our work to make sure that all of our schools are safe and healthy. So under the Key Performance Indicator around safe and healthy schools, we have a strategic goal to maintain safe and healthy schools and to support the physical, mental, and social and emotional health of all of our students. So to do this under this particular Key Performance Indicator, we are looking at student discipline data. And we will identify behaviors that result in suspensions or expulsions. This data allows us as a district to compare our current disciplinary outcomes to what we've seen as disciplinary outcomes in previous years. So research shows us that schools that have higher rates of suspension have lower academic quality and also poor school climate. Research also shows that where we see schools that have higher instances of behaviors that result in suspensions, student achievement is also lower. So we believe that creating an emotionally and physically safe learning environment for all of our students is a priority that we must commit to. And with this commitment, we need to know what type of impact the educational policies and practices we employ have on student discipline and on the health and safety of our school environments. This year, sorry, for the 2022-2023 school year, we saw a 0.5% increase in the percentage of students that had an out-of-school suspension. We are still in the three-star rating category from the previous school year. And I wanna talk a little bit about this because it'll set context for the rest of the conversation. So the data points that I'll share in this presentation, they capture information about out-of-school suspensions entered into our Student Information Management System, Infinite Campus, that were the result of a code of conduct violation. So while this Key Performance Indicator is about the percentage of students that have been suspended out of school, to give context to that, we'll also talk about the number of suspensions and incidents. And so this presentation is an overview of both the percentage of student suspensions disaggregated by identity group, as well as the number of behaviors or incidents that resulted in out-of-school suspensions. And I think that'll give us context to this rating. Not included in this report are the real stories and experiences that are attached to each one of these incidents and students. Additionally, the data in the summary is an overall look at out-of-school suspensions across our school district. And it does not necessarily reflect the suspension rates or incident rates at each individual's school. So when we look at the top five out-of-school suspension categories, we see that aggressive behavior, insubordination, disruption, fighting, and intimidation and threats were the main reasons why we saw student suspensions for out-of-school. Each of these behaviors or events would be considered a code of conduct violation. And then toward the end of this presentation, I'll talk a little bit about the duration of suspensions for these behaviors. We think that it's important to look at the suspension information across identities, so race, gender, participation, and special education services or programming. And what I'd like to do first is to just give us an opportunity to view the information that is displayed as you look at the top five incidents that I shared on the previous slide, disaggregated by race. If you have questions about the numerical value represented by each bar, I'm happy to answer those at this time, knowing that there is time at the end of this presentation for questions. But if you need specific information about numerical value, I can answer that if it's helpful at this time.
I have a question. Can we go back one slide? I think the number is, I don't know what the total number is, 1,400 or something. And this adds up to about half of that. So can you give us an example? If these are the top five, what are some of the other reasons that amount to almost half of the suspensions that aren't in one of these categories?
Yes, so the total number of suspensions were 1,438 for this school year. And there is a range of more than 30 other behaviors that could potentially result in a suspension. Behaviors like potentially truancy if a student were to leave the school without following proper procedures. Vandalism could be another reason why students would be suspended. Arson, I mean, there's a long list of more than 30 potential behaviors. Possession of drugs, possession of alcohol, possession of tobacco. Also possession of weapons or facsimile weapons or devices that could potentially look like weapons. And then technology violations and thefts. And so there are, there's a large range of additional behaviors. And what we see is that range or student representation across that range is pretty small compared to these top-five behaviors. But that is a good question. And I'm happy to, if there's specific interest in other types of behaviors or a full list and definition of other behaviors, we have that information and can provide that.
I was just wondering what the sampling was. You've answered it, thank you very much.
Okay. All right. All right, if there are no questions about the information displayed on this slide, we will look at the out-of-school suspensions disaggregated by students who receive special education services. Noted in the report that was received by the board and not specifically documented in this presentation is the fact that students who received out-of-school suspensions, who also received special education services, were lower this year compared to all other groups and also compared to their previous year. And so that is something that we would like to highlight to see in the decrease in out-of-school suspensions for our students who receive special education services. If there are no questions about that. When we look at our out-of-school suspensions disaggregated by gender, we do see that there is a significant difference that has persisted over the last five years and beyond between male students who are suspended, who receive out-of-school suspensions, and our female students. So this is certainly something that captures our attention and something that we would like to monitor and learn more about. Not to suggest that males are more aggressive, but what we do see, again, for those top-five behaviors of student suspensions, we're seeing males engage in those behaviors that result in suspensions more. All right. Next, I'd like to just share information about, first of all, the total number of out-of-school suspensions. And then comparing that total number of out-of-school suspensions, this is by incident and not by student. And so, again, if you're looking at this information, we'll see out-of-school suspensions disaggregated by race.
So am I correct in understanding that one student could be multiple incidences within this data, right?
That is correct.
Yeah.
So I'd like to talk about the risk ratio. I know that this has been a point of conversation. And there is a, I'll just talk a little bit about how the risk ratio is calculated. So there's a formula that the Department of Public Instruction uses to calculate the likelihood of an individual from an identified group receiving an out-of-school suspension, in this case, compared to an individual from another group. What you see in this data presented here are the risk ratios for Asian students, Hispanic students, students of two or more races, and Black students compared to white students. So I know that there also may be interest around how all student race groups fare as it pertains to risk ratio. So in this instance, the students who are white would be the one, would be the value of one. And that's who everyone else is compared to. But if there's an interest in learning more about how all racial groups compare to all racial groups, it's a more complex process, but we can provide that information. But in this case, the majority of, the students who make up our majority are the baseline or one. And then other students are compared to that group. So what we see here is that.
Can you hold up just a second?
Sorry, and is this based on per student and not per incident?
This is per student, that's correct, yep. So again, we see that the likelihood of Black students being suspended for receiving an out-of-school suspension since we've collected data on this has significantly exceeded the risk ratio for students in all other racial identity groups.
Excuse me, do we have numbers for the state on these same risk factors?
We do. I don't have those numbers as a part of this presentation. But I can, and I hesitate to indicate what those numbers are from the top of my head. But I can provide those so that we can see a state comparison.
Well, I know you're new to this and you don't really own any of this data. But there are others who do, so. there are others who do, so, and I know you're the message bearer today, so.
Yes.
We'll give you some grace.
Thank you. So I will say that I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge that we see this as problematic, that this is not acceptable to see this disproportionality, knowing that Black students make up approximately seven percent of our student population, and we see our being suspended, receiving out of school suspensions at a significantly higher rate. And so this is something that we are paying attention to from multiple lenses, and I certainly don't want this information to be interpreted as Black students are somehow more violent or more dangerous or pose a risk of safety to our schools at higher rates than other students. I don't want that narrative to be what leads here, but what I will say is this is something that we need to look at closely through multiple lenses, particularly from understanding the health, safety, and engagement of all of our students, but particularly students who we see who are more likely to receive an out of school suspension. Another thing that I wanted to share is an overview of the duration of suspensions and what those averages are disaggregated by race. And so generally speaking, we see that most suspensions are approximately two days, and that has been consistent for, for the time that we've been collecting this data and captured here for the last five years. So one of the things that we want to acknowledge is that while suspensions are, we had one thousand one hundred, one thousand four hundred and thirty-eight total out of school suspensions, which seems high. What we will say is that that number is down from previous years, and so we want to see that number continue to drop. Additionally, we want to see the percentage of students who are being suspended drop. So again, we're looking at two different metrics for our key performance indicator. Our key performance indicator is looking at the number of students who receive a suspension, while this information is showing a decrease in events or incidents that resulted in suspension. So even if we were to see this number decline, it doesn't necessarily mean that we'll see the number of students decline, if that, if I'm explaining that clearly. So what we want to see is a drop in both the number of students that are suspended, but then also the number of out of school suspensions from behavioral incidents.
Excuse me, on that slide, the five ninety-five and the twelve eighty have asterisks. Is that because it was the pandemic?
Correct, thank you for that point of clarity.
So do we have the number of students that this relates to?
We do. That's information that we can provide if you were...
I think that would be interesting.
Yep, so the way the data is reported here, and there are a couple of different ways we can disaggregate this. Again, for the key performance indicator, it's for students who receive one or more. So there could be one student who receives five, right? But the way our key performance indicator collects this data, the baseline is just one or more. If we were interested in seeing maybe five or more, or four or more, three or more, that that's information that we can provide.
Well, I just think it's interesting, especially as it gets reported out to the community, it looks like it is fourteen hundred different students, and that isn't necessarily the case if I'm understanding this correctly.
That's not the case, right, yep, that's right. So it's not fourteen hundred different students.
And I, I mean, this obviously is not acceptable, but I think that's fine to report, but then we also need to report the number of students that is making up those fourteen hundred out of school suspensions. And we certainly want the number to go down, but I think you need to have both to be able to see what's happening.
Sure. What I will, oh, sorry.
I'm sorry. Many years ago, when I was in the grad program at UW Madison, and probably not the same professor you had in your program, but he used to say that all numbers are interesting. These are interesting numbers, but they all have a place, they all have a context, so to speak. So for me, the context of these numbers would be enhanced by sharing one of the criteria that we evaluate ourselves on as a board during our self-evaluation, and that is, how do we compare with other districts? How do we compare with the state? These are interesting, as my stat professor would have said, but what's the context? Are we, are we better or are we worse? So having that extent, those extensions would be very helpful.
And if we are, I don't think we always need to totally reinvent the wheel, but if we are better or worse, what are they doing? You know, if they're better than us, and they're, what are they doing? You know, I mean, like, we can learn from neighboring districts, in my opinion, because obviously we want these numbers to go down. But I agree with Beth, too. It'd be interesting to see how many kids, you know, and why, you know? Because when I look at the data, aggressive behavior, okay, what does that mean? You know what I mean? You know, what does that mean? Like, what are, they're kind of really broad subgroups, you know, that I think we could maybe find ways to really dive into the why and, you know, how, and what can we do, you know, to really make a difference? Because at the end of the day, these are kids that we all want to see succeed, you know what I mean? And how do we do that, you know? So anyhow.
Thank you. Well, here's what I, sorry.
Sorry to interrupt, but that's the work that our care teams do at each building, is being able to get at that why. And as we, if we were to be looking at the reporting of other districts, which we can do, just remember that that's going to be about a year delayed because we're, like, we're pulling this from our system. So anything that we would pull from the, our peer comparisons would need to be from the state, which has reported out, you know, so that'll be, that would be something we can track. But again, these are leading indicators versus lagging indicators, those would be the numbers that we would be able to pull together.
And just a quick comment. I'm always hesitant to compare ourselves to other districts when we're looking at our neighbors, because we're so much bigger than Nina, we're so much bigger than Kimberly, and Winnicott, and Omro. So while I agree with my board members that that comparison is helpful, I don't, we need to make sure that we're comparing apples to apples, because it's not apples to apples when we look at us and Nina. We're just two different districts, really, so, food for thought.
Thank you. One of the things that I, two things I'd like to address is the total number of students, I guess just for the public's edification, the total number of students that make up this fourteen hundred and thirty-eight number is seven hundred and twenty-six students total. And then I do have that information disaggregated by race and gender and identity, but I will say overall, just so that we're, if there's a question about, you know, how many students makes up that number, it's seven hundred and twenty-six. And then we'll talk in a couple of slides about what some of the national best practices are to reduce suspensions, and we are doing that work here. We're in the early stages of that work, and we hope to see the results of that work pay off quickly. But as we evolve our system, and then how our system looks at behavior and how we respond to behavior, how we prevent behavior, changing the system, and particularly to Ms. Carlin's point, the system of our size, will take time. And again, this is urgent work, and so we're not saying it will take time as a way to kick the can down the road, but we'll say that the work is happening, and the results and the evidence of that work, because of the size of our system, may not be immediately apparent. Opportunities for improvement, so we will continue to improve, implement, and align strategic actions, and I'll talk about what those actions are in a minute, to reduce behaviors that lead to suspensions, and particularly the behaviors that we've identified as the top five behaviors that we see students receiving out of school suspensions for. As we align those strategies and improve the implementation of those strategies across our system, we will see a decrease in the result of out of school suspensions, in the same way that many schools across our state and across our nation have seen decreases using the same strategies. So we aren't experimenting with strategies, these are strategies that have evidence behind them that have resulted in a lack of, a decrease in suspensions. Philosophically, and I just think conceptually, I'd like to introduce a different way of thinking about how we respond to student behaviors that result in suspensions, because there may be the notion or the question of, if we are suspending students less, are we holding students less accountable? Or are we being softer, for lack of better words, on student behavior? And I would say that those are legitimate questions, and it's a conversation that we need to have. But the answer is, we believe that increased engagement and meaningful engagement is more accountability. So I would, I would argue that a suspension is not necessarily accountability, it's a reaction, and it may give the student time away from school, but I don't know that that requires that student to take ownership for the behavior. I don't know that that always requires that student to be reflective of their behavior. And so what we want to commit to is being strategic about the ways we engage students proactively and in response to behaviors, so that we don't see students receive a suspension for a particular behavior and then come back and repeat the same behavior and receive a suspension for that, and then see those, for lack of better words, just repeat instances or students who are repeating, and we see that, right? Students who are often suspended for the same types of behaviors. And so what all of the research shows is that suspensions don't fix behaviors. All of the research shows that. And so what we want to do is be more strategic in how we engage students if our, if our point is to address the behavior and prevent the behavior from repeating. So that strategic engagement paired with positive behavior development that our members of our care team, our school counselors, our deans of students, even our teachers are doing through restorative practices and conscious discipline work, that is effective accountability. And the three of those strategies or in ways of engagement are aimed to decrease suspensions. So two of the practices that I'll make mention of that we know schools in our state and around our nation have employed that have resulted in a decrease in suspensions, one would be restorative practices. And restorative practices, we began this work last year, and so as we continue to move that work forward and scale it across our system, we'll focus on fostering a sense of community within classrooms to prevent conflict, and we'll focus on reacting to misconduct by encouraging individuals. So this is students and adults, to accept responsibility, rebuild relationships, and repair harm that have been caused by actions. So this concept around restorative practices, again, this is not necessarily new, but it's something that is new to our system, and we know that scaling a strategy like this across a system takes time, it takes monitoring, it takes training and development. But the model that you see there is a visual of what restorative practices looks like in process. And again, this is not to suggest, sorry.
No, you go ahead, Doc.
This is not to suggest that if a student engages in a behavior, that there is not a consequence attached to that behavior, but it is to say that there's also a strategic way of engaging that student in a process that allows that student to take ownership, be reflective, and, student or the adult, and to address harm that was caused by that action.
From a historical perspective, I think I'd call this restorative practices two-point-oh. Going back at least fifteen years ago, Merrill Middle School was, was recognized within the region, the state, and actually internationally for their work in restorative justice. They had a very active care team over there. I can't remember the name of the individual, but I know the principal was also involved, and they were invited to Japan to talk about what they were doing here in Oshkosh, Wisconsin. So I think as a result of staff turnover, that dissipated, but there was a lot of training that took place more than fifteen years ago on restorative justice. In the elementary schools, they had, I think they called them ladders, they were pieces of paper maybe about this long or some, some sort of product, and they looked like a ladder. And you had a conflict between two students, and they would progress up to the ladder, and they would apologize and take responsibility and so on. So the, the concept isn't totally new here, but it disappeared for a while, so I'm glad to see it back.
And Dr. Herzog, what I appreciate about that, first of all, is acknowledging the, the use of those practices in our system and the impact that it had, particularly impact of gaining recognition that sounds like globally, you know, there was interest in what we were doing and the impact of it. And I think what's important in that, with that mention that you made, is that, again, we know that restorative practices and restorative justice work reduces behavior instances, and it reduces the repetition of behaviors from particular individuals. And so again, this isn't something that we are experimenting with and hoping that it works. There's significant evidence nationally, and it sounds like even here in our system, that we can point to to say, we know that this has had a positive impact on decreasing behaviors. The other evidence-based strategy that we're engaging in is conscious discipline. And this actually is a newer strategy, it's evidence-based, trauma-informed, and it provides a variety of behavior management strategies and classroom structures that can be used by teachers and staff to turn situations that they encounter or observe or may be involved in into learning opportunities, both for the student and for the adult or whomever else is involved in the situation. So all of our elementary schools have began the implementation of using conscious discipline practices. This is work that we are exploring, expanding at our middle schools. And again, I will say that we are in the early stages of our conscious, conscious discipline work, and this is work that we want to scale and develop all of our staff so that they can effectively engage in this work. Again, we do not assume that one or two trainings or one or two conferences will result in immediate proficiency in the use of this practice, that it, that repetition, well, we, practice will improve the practices. So we need opportunities to engage in conscious discipline strategies, both through role-playing, through exercises similar to tabletop exercises that Julie referred to, but then also in real time when we see opportunities to examine our brain state, examine how we respond to struggles for power in disciplinary instances, but then also creating the space for reflection and learning to occur when an incident occurs. So an example of that maybe that I can give in real time for individuals who may not be familiar with conscious discipline. So if I, as a student, came in from recess and I had, you know, an altercation on the playground, and I'm still charged up about it, and the state of my brain is not, so that I can, I'm not prepared to engage, and so if I come in upset about that incident and I push my chair over or knock my chair over, that could potentially turn into another behavioral referral or incident if my teacher is not aware that, all right, Sam is not coming into the classroom because he wants to flip chairs over and be disruptive, there was some other incident that is producing this behavior, and rather than engaging in a power struggle with Sam, I need to understand his brain state, remove, make sure that he can go to a space where he can decompress and process, because being in the classroom right now after this incident is clearly showing that he is not in a brain state to engage, nor is he in a brain state to engage with me in a, in a debate about picking up the chair. So yes, he's, I should pick up the chair, and yes, I should be addressed for the disruption that I caused, but when does that happen, is the question? Is it right now in the moment instantly, or is that going to escalate me even more? And I, and let's assume that I'm seven years old at that time. So will that escalate me more in that moment, or do I need two minutes to cool off before I'm addressed by that? And so some of the training that happens in conscious discipline is knowing, and just being sensitive to just the brain state of adolescents, developmental appropriateness, how and when to engage, and just the value of giving time to cool off, time to process, time to breathe, questions to ask, you know? Why are you upset? How do you think that this impacted your peers? Is that what you were intending to do? You know, so really being able to take that student through those processes to support not just the student's development, so that they don't repeat those behaviors, but then again, causing that student to be aware of how that action, that maybe had nothing to do with anybody in that classroom, but how the brain state that that student had from an incident that occurred on the playground transitioned into the classroom and now affected other students. That's something that most seven-year-olds are not able to process on their own without that support and without that facilitation. And so not that we have the capacity in every situation to process every single behavior, but if we notice that there are students who are engaging in behaviors, and particularly if students are repeating those behaviors, we know that there's strategic engagement that is needed, and being aware of what does that student need to be able to take ownership of their behavior. So our conscious discipline work, and I encourage those who are listening and even those here to just review some of the information that is publicly available about conscious discipline, or we certainly have members of our care team, of our, our school directors who can also talk through just what their experiences have been in that training and the value of those experiences, and just being sharper about how and when to engage in some of those strategies to address behavior. Yes?
I'm really glad to see that we're doing this program. When Dr. Lynn Brown was principal at Jacob Shapiro, and that was a very effective... When Dr. Lynn Brown was principal at Jacob Shapiro, and that was a very effective charter school, and she collaborated with Dr. Burke Chang at UW-Oshkosh, they could statistically show that there were significant differences in student learning and student behavior at that school during the time that they were a charter. Again, that was a program that we lost over time, I think because of turnover in staff. We had two people who became trainers of trainers, and they not only trained in this district, but they they trained in others. Unfortunately, one retired, and the other one went to a different district, and so we lost our our two primary trainers. But I personally saw how effective this could be when a teacher is presented with a child who, as they would put it, they're in their brainstem, just let them be for a few minutes instead of the reaction of, you know, getting in their face, and what a difference that made, and how a child, I can remember a specific example with a child with special needs, he could analyze his behavior and what he was like in that state, and he could describe that, and hopefully then not repeat that moving forward. So I found it to be a very powerful tool in terms of addressing student behavior without, you know, the teacher getting totally upset, but understanding where the, what the state, the mental state was of that child and dealing with it.
I stand behind this strategy 100%. As a former school counselor and using these strategies from, moving from a counselor to a teacher, knowing that those strategies, like, they work. And again, especially if we're thinking about students who may need additional support in regulating their behavior, if they have an emotional or behavioral disability diagnosis, knowing that there are some students who need additional support with regulating their behavior, or who maybe have not had opportunities to have behavioral developmental experiences. And so, again, I stand behind this, this as a, as a strategy. There is significant evidence, sounds like both locally and nationally. And again, as a former school counselor, you would use the same practices and strategies. I know for a fact that when used consistently and across a system, that it reduces behaviors and it improves school culture. And so in addition to just what we what we want to do to address specific behaviors, we want to improve overall school culture and climate, and we use consistently across the system and across the school. Schools are more proactive and safer places for for all of our teachers, for all of our students, and for everyone who relies on that school and community.
So Sam, just really quick, I also just want to recognize that Beth Shendel, who's our director of our early learning program, is a nationally recognized facilitator trainer in this space, so we're really fortunate to have Beth's leadership. She's taking, you know, the best practices that are around and helping train people internal to our district. So Beth's done a tremendous job to be able to to help lift this, move this forward. So I just want to make sure we acknowledge acknowledge her work in this space.
My other, I don't know if this is an appropriate time, but I just think parents understanding this is so, so important, right? Like, as a kid will get, I just have parents give me examples, you know, they'll be like, this kid did this, he went to the office, he came back, like, and then, I don't know if they totally understand and get, you know, how this works, because, I don't know, I guess I'm not, I'm not that old, but I'm getting older. You know, like, you would, a parent would call up, or a teacher would call a parent, talk to a parent, and be like, he got expelled, this happened because he did this, you know, like, old school. Like, building that, you know, that, being able to build the knowledge base of people to understand this so that they get, you know, how this is actually helping the school with these types of approach, I just think that's so important.
Agreed. I think for parents and also for all of our staff members, because if they see a student engaging in behavior and the student goes away to an office or a space and comes back, I think a previous way of thinking is, we know if a student does this, like, they're getting picked up and we'll see them in a couple of days. Or if a student does that, they'll go home. So knowing that we've evolved from, evolved from that space over time, there is some mystification around, like, what is happening, and that student comes back, like, did they just get a Starburst or a piece of candy and just, like, come back to the room? Or was there some type of work that happened to engage the student and meaningful reflection grounded in evidence that is aimed to evolve that student's way of thinking and then behavioral responses and emotional responses? And so to your point, there's work that we need to do to share with our community around what our approaches are, why we've moved to these approaches, but also internally with our our teams and faculty across our schools who are also adjusting to an evolution of how we respond to behaviors.
Thank you.
Right. As we end the, near the end of this presentation, one of the things that we also want to do is leverage alternatives to suspension. And so in some cases, students do require more targeted short-term support to modify behaviors, to learn new skills, and to manage impulse or emotion-driven actions. In those unique cases, students are held accountable for their behaviors while they have access in the school setting to meaningful engagement opportunities like counseling, mentoring, care team supporting, community service. There are other alternatives to suspensions that are not captured in this report that I also wanted to acknowledge, programs like RISE or programs that that function in-school suspension and other programs like that. And that's something that I think we need to be deliberate about tracking and monitoring. Who do we see that might engage in the same behaviors that we highlighted earlier that often result in out-of-school suspensions? So if those same behaviors are occurring but don't result in a suspension, it's important for us to still track those numbers of behaviors and then how we're supporting those students, either in an in-school suspension setting with some of this support, or in a setting like a school within a school for additional support. So that's information that we're interested in monitoring very closely to make sure that there is, there aren't inequities and students that we see going to spaces, for lack of better words, that resemble an in-school suspension setting, where maybe they are getting that support. But but more importantly, we believe that students come to school to get a high-quality education. And so for every minute that a student is not in the classroom learning, be that at home or in another setting, they are not engaging in literacy, numeracy, STEM, arts, science. And so our ultimate goal is to make sure that all of our students, at all times possible, are in classrooms engaged in high-quality teaching and learning experiences. So we'll continue to analyze our discipline and suspension data to identify and acknowledge disproportionality, the impact of the strategies that I just described, and opportunities to improve the strategies that we employ. We cannot do this work and should not do this work in silos. It needs to be collaborative, both internally, so as our teaching and learning department works with our student services department, our special education department, our director for equity, that collaboration is important. But also would would argue that that collaboration also needs to happen with parents, with community members, so that we are thinking and sharing together insight about what meaningful engagement needs to look like, what accountability needs to look like, and then how close we are to fulfilling our mission, vision, and guiding principles that we all espouse to. So at this time, I will answer any additional questions, or if there is additional conversation that we want to lift up about this information or next steps, I reserve this time for that.
I just have one comment. You mentioned, just mentioned, high-quality education. I think it's really important that we do continue to offer opportunities to our students. We have Shapiro STEM, but I want to be sure that all of our skills, all of our schools can offer educational opportunities that go above and beyond the norm. I shouldn't say this out loud, but I have a brother, he was a naughty, naughty boy in elementary school, probably gifted and talented, just wasn't challenged enough. And if you're not challenged, you can cause some bad behavior. So I want to be sure that we don't recognize all of these as bad kids. A lot of them have so much to give, and maybe we aren't challenging them in the correct ways.
Totally agree. Thank you for lifting that point up. Totally agree.
Yes.
Yeah, so I have been pretty quiet, but I've been taking notes for this whole presentation. And because we've had so much community engagement on this topic, I'd say for the past year, I feel like I owe it to those community members, some who are here, some who are not, to share those thoughts. That may or may not be helpful, they can tell me afterwards. I often take notes and don't always share all of it, but choosing to share all of it here for some reason. You know, right at the beginning of your report, you talked about how achievement is low when suspensions are higher, and that makes perfect sense because opportunity is low. A suspension takes educational opportunities away from a student. As a teacher, I had students who were suspended, and I gave them the assignment still, but what they missed out on was the lecture, the class discussion, the time to work with peers, time to come up to me and ask for help. So I know everyone in the room probably already knows that, but I just feel like it's so important to highlight that achievement's low because opportunity is low when a student is suspended. Another thing that really struck me, and I'm curious, those top five categories, insubordination, just, I don't know, I guess it's a term that makes me uncomfortable. I wonder how we come up with those categories? Is it like the state that has us classify them? Do we just classify them ourselves?
Yeah, they're state categorized. And then within our system, so, and there's the ability to, you know, describe what the incident was in the system. But that's something that we need to be able to tag for our state reporting.
Okay. Yeah, that's, I think, just the English teacher in me, the word subordinate. Insubordination implies that there are two people that create the problem. And so I would love to see that number not be in our top five. And I think hopefully with the work of conscious discipline, that is a result that might happen, is that the adults in the room would have better training and understanding on, as you were saying, to give a student a couple of minutes to calm down so that the insubordination maybe doesn't occur and the aggressive behavior or whatever the other behavior that leads to insubordination can be the root cause. And then one thing is, if we revisit this report, that I would really like to know is, out of the 726 students who have had out-of-school suspensions, how many of those were one-time offenders? And we talked about how the goal, of course, of a suspension, if there is a goal for one, would be that the student learns how to behave more appropriately when they return to school. So I, it would be really helpful for me to know how many of those students are only suspended once, and then we assume their behavior improves because they're not suspended again. And then one of my last notes was on page 11, I'm pulling it back up of the slide, the one that shows the racial suspension disproportionality. I just want to make sure I understand this because, like, we've talked about, we're talking about two things, number of students and also number of incidences. This here was number of students, so a black student is 3.6% more likely to be suspended than a white student. Does that also, or that does not include the fact that the black student may also be suspended more often, right? So not only are black students more likely to be suspended, but they may be suspended multiple times.
So, yeah, so for the, correct, so for the risk ratio, right, is looking at number of students and not number of incidents, correct?
So that brings me back to the whole point about opportunities. So not only is a black student 3.6 times more likely to miss opportunities, it actually could be much higher if they're suspended more than once, which is why I'm curious about the data on how many are one-time offenders. And then the last note I took was just, this reminds me of the last meeting we had last month when we looked at the Sabers scores and saw the racial disparities there. And I just feel like that's worth bringing up here again because, again, I certainly want our students to have better behaviors at school, but I also really want us to make sure we're helping the adults in the building support those behaviors and understand our students better so that these racial disparities can improve. And I realize I'm kind of being vague about the Sabers thing, but there, I'm trying to remember exactly what it was, but essentially what I remember was that the black students felt they had better behavior more than the teachers, because the Sabers looks at two things, like, do the students feel like they're behaving? Does the teacher feel like they're behaving? And there was a big disparity between that. I could, I should have pulled up the document while I listened, but I was too engaged to go back and look at that data. It just came to me, though, that that I think the two are related, that that Sabers data and this suspension data.
And if I may respond to that and just say that if we look at data points really across all the areas that we measure, Sabers, achievement, discipline, referrals for special education, they actually all, if we were to lay each of those charts on top of each other, as far as, I mean, they all would look like this, right? Like, black students more likely to be, to underachieve, or more likely to be perceived as having lower skills or for social and emotional wellness. So the, that could be a coincidence or a choice, but it's probably not. And so I think that as a system, we need to understand that those are results that our system is producing. If we were to lay our data down across all of the areas that we measure and report out on, and if it's all showing, telling the same story about how students are sorted within our system in almost identical ways, to me, that signals that as a system, where these disproportionals are being produced, and although we talk about them through our key performance indicators separately, they all tell the exact same story as far as a student's experience or outcomes, and have told that story year after year after year. The frequency is too high for that to be a coincidence. And so there's deliberate work we have to do around evolving our systems and our structures to prevent this type of disproportionality.
Thank you.
Any final comments? This is Carol.
I just wanted to say, I really appreciated your presentation tonight. I thought you did a great job giving us examples of conscious discipline, and I also wanted to mention that we have a parent group that's very strong called Real Oshkosh, who is looking at this data very closely. And I am hoping that you will connect with them at some point. I hear some of them might have been at the listening session tonight. So I would like to see us continue to engage with that community group.
Understood. And what I will say is, I am committed to, and I have have met with members of Real Oshkosh, and am committed to engaging with all community groups, but particularly Real Oshkosh, as they have taken on the advocacy charge in our community. And I welcome the accountability that comes from Real Oshkosh, and more importantly, welcome their willingness to partner. And so I am committed to continuing that relationship and working with them.
Thank you so much.
Dr. Herzog.
Thank you. I too really appreciate your presentation tonight. And in reading Dr. Davis's weekly report from last week, he mentioned that the administrative team had read three books, which I thought was commendable, and had looked to synthesize those ideas. So in that spirit, I'm looking to synthesize some background and some materials that we've been provided with as a board. So going back historically, I'm a history minor, so I like, I like to look at history and hope we can learn from it and maybe not repeat some of our mistakes. But in the period from 2014 to 2017, the board at that time was assured by administration that we will work on these issues. Last year, we were told that every school has a plan to address these issues, which ties in with your slide 20, which I really like. And then in 2018, the district embarked on ICS or Integrated Comprehensive System, did I get that right?
Yep.
Thank you. Training with, for equity with UWM, and that included a community group that met online until December of 2021. But since then, there's been no communication with that group. So we have no idea what is going on in the system. I know that involved training at the cabinet and then spreading that out in the district. So what I'm really looking forward to is on your slide 20, that there will be action plans to address these issues. And we look at the the state testing data, especially in math and reading, and I'm really pleased that we have now embedded into district policy where our reading scores will be at certain points along the way. But to me, those scores have been stagnant for several years, and even when we look at the disaggregated results, which I think were shared with us last- which I think were shared with us last November, we were looking at differences from 20 to 40 percentage points, whether it was free and reduced lunch or it was students with disabilities. We need to close that gap. We're here to educate all the kids. And so we need to make sure that we're moving in that direction. I really liked your quote at the beginning about why this matters. The higher rates of school suspensions have, typically have lower academic quality and poor school climate and lower outcomes on standardized test data. So I'm wondering if we, once we achieve those learning objectives in math and reading and the state tests, will we similarly decrease our suspensions, especially with the implementation with fidelity of conscious discipline and restorative practices as well as the ICS practices? And I also am wondering about defining the problem. Are we correctly defining the problem here? Is the problem suspensions or is it something else? Is it frustration of children because they're not being successful, let's say, in reading and math? Is it, is it a matter of engagement? That they don't relate to other adults or other students in their classrooms? And is that holding them back? And because they may not have the vocabulary to share, it comes out in these behaviors that may result in suspensions? So that was just something I was wondering about. And then finally, Real Oshkosh did send an email today to all the board members and to Dr. Davis. And we discussed this in the listening session preceding this meeting. I hope that we will work more closely with Real Oshkosh to make sure that all of our students are being successful. When we say all, we really mean all. And that's one way to show that, that we are working with the parents. And we have a, that engagement piece on the strategic plan, I believe has a component where we're, we're looking to expand the engagement of parents as partners. We often talk about parents as partners. So how do we do that so that students are being successful? Because I've had experience with calling parents as an administrator and telling them that their child is misbehaving and they're working in an hourly rate job. And for them to leave that job jeopardizes their ability to support their families because many of the employers won't tolerate a parent leaving. So to me, there are a lot of things that tie together that we can look at and as we synthesize how to best do this. But I think I really, as I said, I really like your presentation overall and making sure that, like you outlined in slide 20, that we actually do move forward with specific plans at specific buildings to meet the needs of students in math and reading in particular so that they're not being so frustrated with, with what's going on in their, their lives. So that's the, that's the end I want to share tonight. Again, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Herzog.
Anyone else? Thank you very much. It was a wonderful presentation and I look forward to learning more.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to consent agenda. For the consent agenda, the board's been furnished with background material on each item or as discussed at a previous meeting. These will be act upon with one vote without discussion. Board member wants to discuss any item, it will be pulled out of the consent agenda and voted on separately. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Selagi.
Harlan.
Second.
Wright?
Yes.
Wyman.
Aye.
Aye.
DeWitt.
Aye.
Herzog.
Aye.
Selagi.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome, Robyn.
The next one is the CISA 6 contract. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Selagi and Wright.
Any discussion? Dr. Herzog?
Thank you. I had asked that this be considered as an individual resolution because I do represent this board on the CISA 6 Board of Control. There's no conflict of interest, but I want to be open and transparent in pointing that out. And so that's why I'd asked that, that be considered individually. Also, I did have one question on that. It's on the budget. CISA 6 does operate as a cooperative, which means that when there are surplus dollars, they turn them back to the owners who are the 30-some districts that make up CISA 6. So on the budget and financial impact, I was wondering if the $88,000 plus there are actual dollars we have to spend or are those the co-op dollars that we receive from CISA 6? It's kind of like a charge account or a gift card, as it were.
Kohl's Cash.
Kohl's Cash. I like that.
Ted doesn't like that.
So the number that is included in the board material was the expenditures we have known to date, as was in the report. The Gallup dollar amount is not included in that. They were working on putting that back into the contract instead of having it being separate. Aside from that, I believe we do have their rebate dollars, but those have to be spent on new services. So that would be separate from, from the contract you are approving.
Okay. And at the CISA 6 Board of Control last night, we received a, at least a two-page handout on a whole bunch of new services that they are providing. Because if they're going to request that you buy new services, they have to provide you with a menu of those. So that's coming, if you haven't already seen.
Correct. We actually, I have a meeting set up with a representative from CISA 6 in the next week or two to kind of go over what our options are for the, for the rebate funds and how we can use those to help enhance what our current contract is.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And I will be voting present on this just to make sure that there's no interpretation of conflict of interest.
Call the roll.
Excuse me, Wyman.
Aye.
Carlin.
Aye.
DeWitt.
Aye.
Herzog.
Present.
Selagi.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And our final item is the one-year waiver of administrative guidelines. Like a motion and a second so we can open for discussion.
Harlan and Wright.
Dr. Davis.
Yes, so thank you. I had requested this, and this was a late add, so I apologize for that, related to situations that we're working through from a staffing standpoint. So last year, we had passed the policy 3125 and made an adjustment within that policy to require any of our alternative education programs that would be providing licensure to be able to have a student teaching component of that. So we feel that the student teaching component is a really important part of the preparation process. And we still hold to that value of that student teaching is valuable. What we've come across recently, again, as we're filling positions and have shortages, what we're coming across is that we have some candidates who have professional teaching licenses. So in other words, they've been through a student teaching process, but it just wasn't in their particular content area. So it might be, an example would be a social studies teacher that might be licensed for, for social studies but wants to be in Oshkosh. We don't have a social studies opening now, but we have a special education opening right now. So they would pursue their one-year, one-year license. In pursuing that one-year license, under our current policy, that we would require them to go through a student teaching process to get that one-year license. What I'm asking for from the waiver standpoint is to be able to have us open up to all alternative school programs that, that would allow for that licensure to occur. There's one program in particular that is accessible to, to some of our candidates for a significantly less dollar amount that, that we could, that we could, because they had a student teaching experience previously, that I would be comfortable having them go through this particular alternative program and providing them support through either our peer coaches or through some of their peers within that content area. A lot of the value through a student teaching experience is through classroom management, the environment that you'd be working in, in the school setting. And I'm comfortable with, again, this would only be for candidates that would have a current teaching license that would have gone through a student teaching experience. So we can filter that out. This will help us in some flexibility and responsiveness for some candidates over the next three weeks as we're, you know, continuing to, to fill positions to make sure that they're there for our students. So, so that's why, you know, this has been a late-breaking thing that our executive team talked about this week. And I appreciate the flexibility to be able to bring it here. Like, it's going to be a good way. The, the request is for a one-year waiver, that we would just take a look at this, see how this goes. If we see concerns with it, then we certainly, you know, would go back to this policy. And that we also take a look at it just from a systemic standpoint as we're moving into staffing. If we have any feedback, we can take that to policy and governance, too, as we're moving forward. But this, this would help in the immediate.
Dr. Herzog?
Thank you. I had the opportunity to work at UW Oshkosh for 10 years in an add-on licensing, licensing program. And through that, I learned about programs in other parts of the state, including the Wright program, which stands for Residency and Teacher Education, which is offered by CISA 6. Both of those programs, the one at UWO and the, and the CISA 6 program, provide for on-the-job teaching, as it were, but with a component where the person is supervised or evaluated. So I'm very comfortable moving in this direction, especially because these individuals have proven that they're qualified teachers and they've had a clinical experience. There are some programs out there that require no clinical experience. You do everything online and then you walk into a classroom. And so I fully support this. So thank you for bringing this forward.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions? Call the roll.
Carlin.
Aye.
DeWitt.
Aye.
Herzog.
Aye.
Selagi.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Wyman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Future agenda items?
I have one.
Yes.
So a while ago, I had asked for the board to possibly get some training in the equity. And I see that we have Mr. Miller presenting the equity plan the first meeting in April. Is it possible to get our equity plan before next April?
So what I would propose, I think the development of that plan is going to take a little bit of time. What I, what I think would be a good, appropriate response, and it talked also, I think it addresses something Dr. Herzog had brought up, is that in September, we have maybe an overview of the ICS program and how we're working through kind of a reboot. Dr. Coleman is a nationally-recognized facilitator for ICS, so we do have an expert in the house. And so that's very helpful. So he can provide that overview along with Mr. Miller providing an opportunity for how the coordination of that work will happen through his position. So I think just doing, I would do it as a staff report, not necessarily as a workshop. But I think doing it as a staff report, I think, would be important. And then also talking to Dr. Coleman, how we can coordinate, just follow up with the community, community participants from our original work and thinking through how we can further engage the community in that, in those spaces. So again, I think with the, with the new team, we're well-positioned to be able to do that. So does that?
Yeah, and would it be possible to get an update on what happened, the conversation from the listening session and next steps? Or report maybe on next steps related to the listening session?
Yeah, we should, yeah, that should be at the next board meeting, just to report out on the listening session. So that would be something that, that Julie Conrad would provide just naturally.
Okay.
But yeah, we'll be able to do that.
Thank you.
Any other items?
I have one. In our listening session and also our public comments tonight, it was brought up about getting the word out about our 4K programs. And that's something I have always been passionate about. I love our 4K programs. I think it's amazing. So I am in full support of looking into how we advertise that and if we can do more to get information out to parents.
Yep, so, okay.
I don't know when, it's, school starts in three weeks.
What I would propose, yeah, let's get school started as, as we're, as we're moving forward. One of the things that we will bring likely as a recommendation in September as a candidate for our new communications position. And that might be a good place, again, that, that position is really about storytelling and be able to get the good word out. So that might, you know, 4K might be a place to start. We certainly have, you know, a enthusiastic director who does a fantastic job, you know, promoting the program. And I think being able to connect her with our new person in communications would be a good place, a good place to start.
Actually, I was thinking of that, too, but I've, I've just forgotten over the couple hours we've sat here.
If the Herald is listening, they should do a 4K article over next week.
There you go.
Okay, anything else? Future agenda announcements?
Oh, I do have one. Besides our upcoming open house for Belle Phillips Middle School on September 17th, the new Nina High School has an open house this coming Sunday at 3 o'clock. So if you're interested, that would be an interesting walkthrough of that building before we see Belle Phillips.
Great.
Thank you.
If there's nothing else, is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second. Carlin Selagi.
DeWitt.
Aye.
Herzog.
Aye.
Selagi.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Wyman.
Aye.
Carlin.
Aye.
DeWitt.
Marvellous.
Thank you.
Hi, Jean.